Okay, we're recording.
Okay, we will, we're here for the Town of New Canaan Town Council Town Hall, sorry, Town Council meeting, regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 14th, 2024, starting at 7:00 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now take the roll call.
Eric Thunin?
Here.
Jennifer Zonis?
Here.
Maria Norton?
Here.
Christina Ross here.
Penny Young?
Here.
Tom Butterworth?
Here.
Mike Morrow?
Here.
Rita Bettina?
Here.
Luke Fockman?
Here.
Chris Lee Norton?
Here.
Hillary Norman?
Here.
Okay, we have 11.
I'll call the meeting to the order. As a preliminary matter and as a point of the chairman's privilege, we'd like, the entire town council would like to extend its deepest sympathies and condolences to our colleague Janet Fons, as she's mourning the loss of her husband and to the Fons family in this deep, deep, sad time of grief. So we extend all of our support that we can and truly, I'm sorry to hear. With that said, we will allow, move to item number two under the agenda, public comments.
We have no one signed up in the open line.
Okay, having no public comments, we will now commence, move to item number three on the budget, I'm sorry, on the agenda, the Budget Overview, which is the review and discussion of the proposed town budget for fiscal year 2025, including a review of the following budget and line items: recreation, public works, and DPW. So Tiger, whoever wants to come up. John, the floor is yours. And while John's getting set up, I do want to extend my deep gratitude to all of you. I'm really super impressed, as I always am, with all of you that you all heeded my, you know, annoying, irritating repetition about get educated, pay attention to the process as the budget's being scrubbed throughout January and February. I've just heard wonderful feedback from a lot of people out there who were really, really happy that our, that our body engaged as it did in the last two months. So this will make our process move a lot more efficiently, efficiently. So thank you all. With that, the floor is yours.
Okay, I luckily brought with me George Bennington, the chairman of the Park and Rec Commission.
Okay, great. Sorry. With that said, thank you for having us. With me, I have George Bennington, who's the chairman of the Park and Rec Commission. I handed you our abbreviated budget presentation. After an email of last night, I decided to redo it. Very simply, I'm going to go through it real quick. I'm willing to take questions at any point in time there, but I just want to hit the high points in that. With that, with the way this is set up, I'm having a problem with sharing it. So it won't let me out of one. Let's see. There it goes. Never mind. I got it now. So again, thank you for having us. Okay, let's go. Okay, so very simply, the Parks and Rec Department, ever since, unfortunately, Steve Banco's passing, we've come under the first selectmen. So we're under selectmen. You can see we have a pretty good staff, 23 full-time, year-round employees. With that said, we have about 150 summer help, anything from lifeguards, camp counselors, gate attendants, et cetera. With that, last Tuesday, we added a wedding coordinator. So Rachel Lampum has just started, great addition to the team. We're very excited about that. So, right into it. Park maintenance, up 3.64%. Three main highlights in that, under salaries, under salaries overtime, we added 25,000 in there, and that is for additional litter pickup time. We want to have somebody come in during mainly the playing season, so the spring and the fall, when there's a lot of activity on our fields, going a little bit into the summer, we want to pick litter every morning. Have somebody come in early, go down to Mead Park, do the three turf fields, Dunning and the two other turf fields. So that comes to about $23,000. And then another 2,000, just due to contract changes. With the contract changes, when people have raises, we needed to add a little bit more. Outside services contractors, 10,000. That we added for some geese control, Canada geese control on both sacks in the high school. A little bit different than the program we do at Mead Park, but very simply, we can move some of those birds so they don't make such a mess on the playing fields. And the last thing, the last main driver is grass treatments. This year, we're projecting about a 10% increase in fertilizer and seed costs combined, which seems ridiculous, but compared to the last few years where we had 40% seed changes and 17% fertilizer, it's pretty good. So. Go right into recreation, civic activities. The main change in this is the fact that the porta-potties that we have around the fields, we have to add handicapped accessible ones. That almost doubles the rental cost of having them. We're also getting a true number in there. So we're not playing games with taking money out of this account and that account. So that's the true money for what that costs. So, right into rec administration. The main reason this is down is because of the new self-sustaining fund. The self-sustaining fund, we removed stuff from the recreation department, the rec administration, and some other line items or other budgets, and put it all into self-sustaining. Waveney House, again, down 22.9%, mainly because that, the Waveney House is also part of the self-sustaining recreation fund. There's a separate section to it, but we feel that the wedding should be self-sustaining. So that's why that's down. Paddle tennis. Again, the reason there's 0% there is the money that is in there for, that was in there for paddle permits, et cetera, that type of stuff, isn't there. It's all in self-sustaining. So the only things that, the big numbers that are left are properties repair and maintenance, and then the court repairs. Every year, we need to tighten the screens and also have at least one court painted. Park buildings, 12.7% increase. The main driver is a 25% increase in electricity. This budget covers the electricity on the water tower fields, the athletic lights there, and also the orchard and water tower fields, the girls' softball fields. So that's one of the main drivers and one of the main usages for electricity in park buildings. Lappam Community Center. This is one by, one item, we did not put it into self-sustaining. We, we feel that we need to support our older population with their programs. A lot of them are free, subsidized by the town through the budget process. So that's why we did not want to put that in there. Some of the prices we'd have to drastically increase, and we don't think that's right. On a good note, with the Medicare Part D signups, they saved residents over a million dollars in town by helping them do that. So that's, that's a huge, huge savings. One little note for Lappam Community Center, we have received a grant. That grant will not affect our staffing or anything like that. We'll have people that will come on and work and everything, but it's not like we're hiring any permanent employees. So after the grant money runs out, if we feel that the additional programs and the nighttime classes and things that we're going to do, we will be back to go through the budget process. We're not, we're not putting anything in there that's going to cost the town money down the road.
What grant?
It's, the grant does not fall into the budget. It's, it's paid separately. So those costs will strictly stay separate.
How much is it?
Josh, a little help? My first guess was going to be 38,000, but I'm really guessing. Yeah. Sorry. Kiwanis Park. The only change really there is a little bit of change in minimum wage for lifeguards. So we've gone up a little bit there, as far as chemicals and everything. Good. Now we get.
John, what's the staffing headcount for Kiwanis?
Offhand, I can't tell you. You know, it varies per day and stuff like that. We'll switch people back and forth as we need to. We always have a supervisor there, and then we have enough lifeguards on, you know, depending on the weather and everything else. So.
And that's a chart, right?
Very, very minimal town fee.
The ones that don't have a permit, do they pay by the day?
They can pay by the day. We also charge guest fees at both the pool and Kiwanis. Same guest fee would be if you brought a guest to play tennis or paddle or anything like that. Now we're into the, the fun stuff. This is the recreation fund, so the self-sustaining fund. With just barely a year into it, we have $100,000 coming back to help offset some of the recreation fees, things like my salary and stuff like that. We wanted to start slow, so we didn't, we didn't go and say we can give a lot more, but it stays in that fund and is used for more programs. What's nice is when we did a special event, we did a father-daughter dance, and it sold out in minutes. We were able to add a second seating, which also sold out because we had the money there and was, and were able to add it in instead of going through the whole budget process. So. We'll go right into weddings. Again, you know, weddings, we have a new coordinator. We've gone through the branding. We're very excited about what we can do with weddings. We, we've been seeing a lot more interest of people coming by. We've got the new bathrooms. They're almost done, and it's just, it's exciting that we're moving forward. So.
John, can you tell me what the salary is for the wedding coordinator and what the revenues are for weddings?
The revenues, we, we're projecting right now about $75,000 this year. Her salary, I believe, is around 30. Thank you. Okay, part-time position. One of the things that happens with our revenues is we're booking weddings two years out, and we're going through a lot of weddings that are at the old rates. So, which is fine.
I was wondering what the fee is for residents versus non-residents to rent for the wedding?
There is a difference, and I can get you, I can get you that information, but off the top of my head, I'd rather not say.
Has it gone up from last year?
It did not go up this last year when we went through our fees adjustment, but the year before we did. So.
And I'm sorry, the 75K are, so gross revenue, that's not?
No, that, that's what we think is going to be our profits. I'm sorry.
Profits, okay. When you say revenue, I.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, I thought that was low.
The weddings don't create a profit. They run at a deficit.
No.
Revenue. No, I was asking about the word revenue, which would include, you know, costs as well. Like, you're getting, revenue versus net profit. So there are costs involved. Right. So he's saying 75 includes those costs coming in for weddings?
Okay.
And then you, you're saying you're, you take off the 30K in salary, right?
Yeah, no, we're, we're going, we project that we're going to have about $200,000 coming in. We're going to have a profit of probably about 75,000.
Okay, that's.
Yes.
Thank you.
True profit.
And Sean, can you talk about the, the new branding? What are the marketing channels? Are you, now that you have the new brand, are you?
Well, we kind, we kind of, we have the new brand, and we've had that for about a year, and we kind of, without having a wedding coordinator, when that, when, when we were out of one, we've kind of put it on hold. Our new wedding coordinator does a lot of marketing and things like that, and she's already putting it up on Instagram and Facebook and things like that. So right now, we use Wedding Wire, which is one of the, one of the services where, where you'll be found, so to speak. We've, we have our own website now. So Waveney House, Waveney House Events.com.
And do you know how many you might be, I mean, so with the 200,000, again, I'm sorry to belabor this, it's really interesting to me, but how many weddings do you think, are you planning, are you projecting? Do you have that number?
We, offhand, no, but what, we, we offer weddings Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. We only, we only do one event a day. It's not like we try to get people in and back out again. They, they, so they have 10 hours for the, for their rental.
Right.
From beginning to end.
Right. Reason I'm asking is, again, it does seem slow. It seems low, even for revenues for 200K.
You know, for a lot of them that we're going through right now, the cost is just over $3,000. So we've gone up drastically from there.
Got it. Thank you.
Is that coordinator a part-time or a full-time?
That's a part-time position. Yeah. And one of the things that's nice with a wedding coordinator for us is she's willing to do tours in the evening, you know, on weekend days. So that, we haven't had that ability. Very, Steve Banco Pool, 2.9% increase mainly from the salaries. We're not, the only capital project we're doing now is Tiger has approval to redo the parking lot. So that's going to happen this spring before we're opening. That, that will come out of the, the money that we have at the pool.
Do we use an outside vendor to clean that pool during, in-season?
We, we did some. We also changed the way we cleaned it this last year. We, we had a problem with putting the robot in every night, and we've changed how we do that. So we've, we, we feel we've done a much better job. We've done two things with cleaning. We have the outside vendor come in more. We also have somebody from the cleaning company on staff during the days, on the weekends, and then coming on the weekdays when it's a little bit slower. They come in in the morning, they'll come back during the day to keep the locker rooms cleaner.
Okay.
Could you remind me on when that was built and where are we on planning for renovation? I mean, did we have to do a whole new pool, or what is that?
We're not, right now, we do not think we're, in the near future, we'll be doing a whole new pool. It was, it's 21 years old. So it's at that point in time. The main thing that we see with the pool is we'd, we'd like to have some redundancy in the pump, the main pump. We have one. So if it goes down, we have about three days until we can have a new one put in there, and we have to be closed during that time. We're also seeing 21 years' worth of freezing and thawing of the decking. So we'll probably be replacing the concrete, but we think we can make it through this next year, and then we'll go from there. So.
I have a question. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I had a question about the overtime and salaries. What, are there going to be additional hours? I thought, don't people start at 7:30 in the morning?
Are you talking about the pool itself, or?
No, I'm switching gears. I'm sorry. I had trouble getting my microphone on, so I wasn't. The salaries overtime for additional litter pickup for 25?
Yes, oh, back in park maintenance. Yes.
So what is that? Like, how many hours extra is that?
What it is, it's seven days a week, we'll have somebody coming in. On the weekdays, we're projecting two hours a day. So Monday through Friday, two hours, they'll come in early. It'll be one of the park maintenance staff. On weekends, they receive a three-to- three-hour minimum payment. So that's what we worked on there.
So what time do they start during the week, two hours early?
In the, they either start at 6:30 or 6 o'clock. We, we go to switch to summer hours for part of the time.
So they're going to start at 4:00 AM?
Some of them will start, one guy will be starting at 4:00 AM to pick litter.
Wow, cool. Other question about who, I don't see a budget line item for who cleans the bathrooms in Waveney and other, I'm talking about in the park, not in the house.
That comes out of the town buildings account. So it doesn't come out of recreation account.
Okay, thank you.
And then capital equipment, parks capital equipment, as far as mowers and that type of stuff, I can go through that, that quick. Very simply, normal replacement of a 10-year-old vehicle, a utility vehicle replacement, that is heavy-duty vehicle that we use on sidewalks for sanding, et cetera, 72-inch mower. It's an out front, commercial-duty mower. The ride-on mowers are zero turns, you know, what you see so many landscapers using all over the place. The articulating loader is actually a mower that we would use for edges of trails, mead pond, that type of thing. The blowers, that's a commercial-duty stand-up blower for doing large areas. The, under trailers, it's actually to replace one trailer, that's an enclosed trailer that's mainly used for baseball. Paint machines. Last year, we were fortunate, we were able to get a, have a robotic paint machine that works great for laying out the fields, but we still go over our fields every day. So that's for a ride-on paint machine, not every day. Every week, we go over our fields. And the field mower is used for cutting high grass, places such as Waveney for the Fourth of July, and also Irwin Park, which we mow every other year.
Is the one that we have being replaced?
On which one, the mower?
Yeah.
Yes. That's, that, that mower is, the field mower is actually a three-point hitch, so it goes behind an existing tractor. It gets, it gets hooked onto the existing tractor.
So are we getting rid of the one we have, or?
Yes, we will get, we will be getting rid of one. Yes, it's, it's 15-plus years old. It's worn out. Yep.
Are we selling any of this stuff on the secondary, or is it just going out the back door?
No, most of it will be traded in. You know, it, it's the easiest way. Depending on what prices do, if we, if we trade it in, we can use it towards the purchase price. If we sell it, otherwise, it goes back to the town's general fund.
Right.
Is electric an option with any of this equipment?
Not really. We, we, we just, we just, we're buying a new golf cart, and we looked at it for that, and unfortunately, the way we use it is different than a golf course, where they start and stop, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't work well for us to get through the whole year. But there are, like, the zero-turn ride-on mowers, the problem is, they go about two and a half hours, and you need to replace a lot of battery packs. So we don't think they're there yet. But we've been, we've been demoing small equipment, things like hand blowers, weed whackers, that type of stuff. We're demoing, they're just making progress, but we're not sure we're, that we're there yet. That's all.
And, and are these amounts, including the trade-in?
That's what we're requesting. That, that right now is a number that we could purchase at, because we don't know what the trade-in values will be. A lot of them, by the time we're done, 10 to 15 years, there's not much left. Like, the, the zero turns, usually, we end up taking them apart and taking them for scrap metal, unfortunately.
But it could go down if, if there's any trade-in.
It could end. Yes, um, yes. If we don't spend it all, it, it comes back. You know. Good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
John, can I ask you this moment's question? When you said you're thinking of redoing the pool, are you putting it down on the five-year capital plan?
We don't think we need to redo the pool.
Or whatever major repairs would have to be done?
The, the deck, it doesn't go into the capital plan because it's not spent out of that same money. It comes out of the pool fund itself.
Okay.
So that's, that's why, no, it's not in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had a couple of quick questions, John, before you hit the road. On the parks maintenance with the additional litter pickup, I mean, can't we stuff that into the guy's regular, regular shift hours?
That's what we're finding we're not able to do. So.
Why's that?
Just because then something else has to give. So if, if we have them come in and, and do the pickup on their regular time, then we've lost that ability to have something else done. You know, it's like, they keep, for that hour and a half, two hours, they're not able to be mowing, fixing baseball fields, whatever. So.
And on the seed cost, can't we just stockpile some of that, or is that, like, have a shelf life of a month?
It doesn't, seed doesn't have a shelf life of a month, but we do like to use it in the year that it's purchased. It, it does go down in viability over time. And stockpile, right now, I wouldn't recommend in stockpiling. They've had a few bad years for grass seed. We're hoping that's going to turn around.
That in the sense that it's not productive? That it's not good seed, or, or it's just?
They had, they had low, not low-quality crops, but they had low amounts, and weather-related, and, you know, a lot of, almost all of it comes from Oregon.
So do you have to use more seed as a result?
We haven't, we haven't seen that. We're still getting the, the high 90s in germination, which is the key. But it's just, it's given them the ability to raise the price.
Does anybody offer, like, you know, like, an option meeting, like, your home heating oil, they try to get you locking in that, lock in this right now, or else it's going to go $10, you know.
We buy, we buy our, both our fertilizer and our seed on your purchasing agreements, so it's locked in that way. But if, if we were to buy seed now for the following year, they, they probably wouldn't even, you know, they're not going to speculate on the next year's seed, what it's going to do exactly.
Has it ever been socialized? I mean, it's a good point. You know, it's the, people offer, like, you know, you just signed a deal with Amex, and it has a max increase of 5%. Is there, I mean, just having socialized in the idea of, like, not saying locking him in, but having something like, hey, you will not increase more than 6% for my next year purchases, as long as I buy minimum of Y.
I haven't, but I, you know, I can socialize it with some of our vendors. Yeah.
You get creative, like, hey, guys, we want to work with you here. You know we're going to be back at the table. You know we're going to purchase more. Is there something that we can work together? And, you know, you have a max increase of X, as long as we're buying a certain amount.
Yeah. It's a good thought.
Go ahead, Maria, go.
Mine's more like logistical, about the grant amount not being part of the budget. Because the Board of Ed shows their grant, what comes in, and then they show where it goes. Is, is this typical to not put the, the grant amount as part of the budget?
For Lappam?
For, yeah. This is how I was advised, that it wouldn't be showing up in our budget, so it wouldn't become that, okay, all of a sudden, we've got this huge increase in our budget, because we're not requesting the money from the town. But here we go.
So typically, in the, in the budget books, you have, they're centered around the general fund for the most part, other than the smaller funds like the recreation fund, not so much the grants fund. So it won't be represented in the book you have. It's kind of, it comes in off-cycle, kind of, and it's, I guess, only decided to use, utilize next year, or is it only next year, or is it probably crossing over?
Year and a half, crossing in more than.
So it kind of falls outside of that, so it wouldn't be represented in there.
It just feels like a blind spot. Like, you, you know it's coming in, but you don't really know, because it's town.
So it's definitely something that's tracked within the, like, annual audit and financial report, in terms of the fund balances of those funds, the smaller funds, the special projects and the grants funds. Not so much in the budget itself.
I think that it would be clear if you put down the, the grant amount and then deducted, knowing that the town will cover it until that grant arrives, because otherwise, we're overtaxing the taxpayers for something that is coming in from the government.
So we're not overtaxing?
Can I jump in, Josh, on that? I'll just say, from an accounting. Just from an accounting standpoint, Christina, we have a grant fund, which is the accounting mechanism we use. Once a grant is approved, we set up the expense and the revenue at that time in the grant. So the expenditure never goes through the general fund, so we're not taxing.
But it's still on the total for the budget that we're basing the taxes on?
No, so that's not within the budget.
No, it's not in it.
It doesn't have to be, because it's a Y.
So there's the accounting mechanism, but I'm thinking about the practical, like, the operational, what happens, you know, what, what services are rendered to use up that grant?
Right. If we, if we hire an instructor for a course, they would be, that's outside our regular stuff, that instructor would be paid out of the grant money.
So it's educational?
It, it's for, it, it was for centers like Lappam.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's only for Lappam Community Center.
It's different. Okay, I understand.
Yeah, it's not like it's grant we can use on anything else. So.
I have one question on the capital equipment. For the artificial field groomer, is that an additional one, or is that a replacement?
That would be a replacement, but that's not in this year's. That's down the road.
Oh, I was looking at just the page on parks capital. Oh, that's right. I'm looking at the wrong year. Thank you.
Sorry.
So that's for 2025, 2026. That's part of your five-year. Okay.
Yes, we, we have, we have the proper equipment to groom the fields now, but as they wear out, we need to replace. So that's all.
Got it. Thank you.
John, last question, because what would budget season be without a porta-potty question? So, did you say we rent those? Did I not hear that right?
We, we do rent them. That's, that's what you regularly do. You have a company that comes in and cleans them every week, and so you, you don't own them, unless we want to then go buy a truck and have somebody do it, and all that type of stuff. So.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. It makes more sense to just continue on with the current arrangement, rather than bringing in a outhouse in-house.
Right. Right.
I wanna know how long he's been planning to say that. Is that been in the holster? Is that been in the holster, Mikey?
It's the Ferranias, maybe. But, no, I get it. Thank you, John. Any other questions?
I have one more, just, the Saks Fields, that's, that's property of the school, that goes into the school, or is that town?
The town maintains it, so that, the Parks Department maintains it. Twenty-six years ago, um, the Parks Department took over the maintenance of the school grounds. So...
I should know that, okay.
Yeah, well, that's when I was hired, that's why, no. So we, we took over the budget, we take over the fertilizing, we take care of, over the mowing, et cetera.
But even, like, the little infrastructure around the, um, not very much. I mean, like, the, you know, the little bit of equipment that sits there on the field, that's all...
Like the soccer goals and that type of stuff?
Yeah, like all that stuff.
Most of that is purchased from the sports groups, like New Canaan, New Canaan Football for the soccer goals.
Yeah, yeah, right, all that stuff.
Yep, exactly. They purchase the goals.
And if someone someday wanted to put, like, bathrooms on that field, you know, just curious, who would that, like, be, who would that be?
It'd be a combination. You know, um, we'd work with the school system, um, because, of course, Tiger would have to take over a lot of that. But yeah, it would, you know...
That's where, okay.
Yeah, like, like, when we have a, a water fountain at the high school, you know, we're, we maintain that.
Oh, speaking of which, the water fountains that are on Saks, those aren't operational, correct?
That, that's one of the things, Gray, or, the water comes right directly from the school, so that's done by the, the building maintenance department of schools.
So there's three water fountains that have, that sit there that don't work, that is from...
I couldn't even tell you if they work. The school system is the one that maintains those three.
Yeah, the school facilities.
Because, because the way the water comes out of the school.
Got it. Got it, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you.
I have one, I have one more question.
Oh, sorry, yeah, right.
Yeah, that's all right. How many vehicles do you have? It looks like you're replacing one or two eighty-five-thousand-dollar vehicles...
We're replacing...
Every year, for the next five years.
Yes.
And one year, two.
We, we try to get at least ten years out of them. Depending on what it is, we go, we go ten to fifteen years. So, we ha, we have twelve, twelve vehicles that we use throughout town.
Okay.
Yeah.
And eighty-five thousand is just your best guess of the average cost, and that's what you've laid in the forecast budget? That obviously could be higher or lower.
Yes, because the, the, the one we're replacing, well, bless you, well, um, it's a liftgate truck, so it has a different body on, it's a low-boy type truck, so six wheels.
Yeah.
Also, it comes with a snowplow, so we need that. And our best guess is, on the trade-in, is anywhere from a thousand dollars to six thousand, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
It is very hot. Okay.
Sure.
That's the, uh, problem for...
Hey, Bob? Put the AC up a little bit, I mean, I'm, like, boiling here. Is anyone else super warm?
Yeah.
Thanks, sorry.
It is, I can't get it.
One second.
End of the hour.
Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna matter if we put the AC up or not, but...
Really?
Yeah.
It'll take a long time to, it's a big room, it's a big building, so I'll ask...
Can you control it on your phone, Tiger? That's awesome.
I, no, I, I, no, I have the guy who will do it on my phone, I don't have access.
Tiger has the whole town controlled on his phone.
His place down, right?
If he lost his phone, the town would just implode.
He's a jackal.
Yeah, but he's still got a tie.
Yeah, no, that's it.
Sorry about that. Okay. Tiger, anytime you're ready. All right, give me a second here. All right, so, um, I left a copy of a presentation for you as well. It's a very, very scaled-down version, it's only fifteen pages from the fifty-sixth normal or sixty pages normal.
Thank you.
But I, but I do thank you, this is my seventeenth meeting of this budget, just to see if, you know, I wanted to see exactly what's, it's my seventeenth, so I, so I thank you that we'll, uh, you know, it'll be a little shorter. It is what it is. The, uh, um, it's cruel. So, uh, regard, uh, so I'm gonna work a little bit through our operating, I can talk about any department that you might have questions on. Our overall operating budget is twelve-point-eight million dollars, it's down from thirteen million, um, was our initial ask, so it's down approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So it's a two-point-three percent increase year-over-year. The, uh, the major drivers, if you wanna, if we can walk through each one quickly, would be, on the administration, it's strictly a salary change for, uh, for the employees. Noted, on engineering, it's actually a decrease year-over-year, that's, uh, we reduced, uh, part-time staff by about fourteen thousand dollars. On town buildings, we took out, um, monies that we had set aside for the Board of Ed as far as Two Twenty Elm Street. So Two Twenty Elm Street was gonna run through, it was, last year was running through our accounts, um, for the property management of Two Twenty Elm Street. The Board of Ed has carried that over, the Board of Ed was paying us, we were paying the property manager, the Board of Ed's gonna pay the property manager directly. But we have other drivers on town buildings that are to the positive, we have about twenty thousand dollars in outside contractors, and ten thousand dollars in service contracts, and that's strictly based on year-over-year. We have one more year in those contracts, and then we'll go back out to bid, um, next year. In the Highway Department, um, we have about a seventy-six thousand dollar change in our overtime. The strict reason for that is, uh, because we used to have a railroad offset, so the railroad fund used to pay money to the Highway Department and to the Parks Department to offset some of the work that we do at the railroad lots, for cleaning the railroad lots, the parks would shovel, highway plows, sweeps, what have you. The railroad fund is quite low, at present, the balance won't handle, um, that amount for us to take it out of or transfer out of the railroad account to put in the highway account, so we had to put it in the highway account directly. And then we have some additional drivers in the Highway Department as far as our de-icing products. Salt is up quite appreciably, and our, our other de-icing products are up slightly. So salt, for about four years, was actually on a decrease, and then I think Morton figured out that they were actually supposed to have their graph go the other way, and then made a market change year-over-year, um, last year, and, uh, we're, uh, we're seeing that change, or that different, that difference. The transfer station is probably our biggest driver out of the two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars that we have, and an increase, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand is out of the transfer station. And that's because we had a new contract for our MSW, our municipal solid waste hauling, and we were paying, we had a very, very good, uh, two sets of contracts, two five-year contracts, we were very, very low for two years, or two sets of five for ten years. We were paying ninety-five dollars a ton, last year, we're paying a hundred-and-eleven now. So that's sixteen-dollar change right there, a seventeen-dollar change is a market change over the seven thousand, um, so it's about eighty-five thousand dollars right there, just in garbage hauling. We are paying less than our neighbors, okay, our neighbors are paying more, but we're now seeing that difference, where we were paying so low, now there was kind of a correction, if you will, in the, uh, in the bidding. And then we are anticipating, uh, we're gonna be going out for recycling, and our, um, bulky waste, which is brush and construction debris, we'll be going out for that this coming season, and we have monies set aside where we think that those numbers will go up as well. We have fifty thousand dollars in outside, uh, in bulky waste, and twenty-five thousand in recycling, that we think that that's where the bids will come back in again, when we go back in for another two-year contract.
Did we sign another five-year contract?
Can we, we signed a five-year, we signed a two-and-a-half-year contract for, for, um, for our municipal solid waste. The reason for that is because there's a lot of fluctuation out there in the market, right? There's a lot of things going on, the state is, uh, starting to, uh, tax haulers if they leave the state with any garbage, the state wants to manage all the garbage in-house. Uh, problem is, though, that they shut down one of the, um, energy plants, the burn plants, right? So one of the waste, uh, waste energy plants, they shut down, so now we're having a problem, so a lot of people having to send it out of state. Um, we, our hauler will either go out of state or handle it in-state. If he goes out of state, the, the fee that's associated with it, he'll pay.
So is it driven by them or us?
As far as what?
So we have two five-year con...
It's driven by us as to whether or not we want, we would like, you know, as far as our contracts are, the, the duration of our contracts, they're driven by us. But what we were seeing out there was the fact that we didn't necessarily want to be out for five years, we felt the five years was gonna put us at a, at a disadvantage, so we shortened it down. We, while we were favorable, but that was during a time when you were actually receiving monies for recycling, we're no longer receiving monies for recycling, we're paying for it. And then the problem with the fact that there's landfills closing, and there's other avenues closing, we didn't want to be in that situation where they were speculating for what was going to happen. You never like when they speculate, you know, then, then they're guessing at that point in time, we don't like to guess.
Given the way the inflation is today, and I don't want to derail the conversation...
Sure.
But just given where inflation has been in the last, like, two to three years, you would think you'd wanna lock something up more long-term, because, you know, the uncertainty of the market.
Correct, but everyone else that did that seemed to have numbers that drove way outside the realm at that point in time, so we didn't want to be in that situation. You know, it's, it's, it's a gamble either way. We could think about it and say, oh, we're gonna be in a very favorable...
Absolutely.
Right, we're in a favorable situation.
I was just picking your brain a little bit, saying, hey, why'd you cut it in half? And, you know, given the way the inflation is operated, I, I would assume that it was them that said, hey, we gotta keep a short contract, because, you know, anything can happen.
No, it was, it was, we, we, we described the, the duration of the contract, and it was strictly because we didn't want them to be guessing on those out-years, and then be locked in just to a number that was untenable for the town, and we might have been able to do better by going back out to bid again, to be honest.
So two points, Tiger. One, the other issue you're gonna get hit with, too, is there's a lot of consolidation in that refuse hauling business. I have a, a lot of, uh, carding clients that I represent, so it's, it's on its way, the big guys are coming in, and they're buying everything up, I mean, the Finocchio's and the, um, you know, the other ones are probably, well, a lot of them are getting bought up by private equity anyway, so you're gonna continue to see that, so to lock in a five year is pretty good. But my question is, of the eight-point-three percent increase, I mean, how much of that really could you pinpoint to the increased cost of the hauling?
Eighty-five thousand dollars was the tipping fee. That's, that's a change.
And then the, the delta between the ninety-five and a hundred, a hundred-and-eleven, is that what you said?
That's, yeah, it was a sixteen or seventeen thousand dollar change, right there, at seven thousand tons per year.
And then with the other two, um, uh...
Recycling and...
Yeah, and the bulky waste.
Bulky waste.
Recycling, that's going out for bidding, are those gonna be five-year contracts?
We haven't decided where they're gonna be, those are typically two-year contracts. They have been typically two-year contracts for, for quite some time now, due to the volatility in the recycling market. So that's one of the reasons, we had a long-term contract, and we, we, uh, it wasn't in our favor, so we're trying to stay with a, a shorter contract. But we can take a look at that again, that, that's slated to go out, um, this coming, this coming season for next year, so for, it's a, so we'll see. And at that point in time, if, if, uh, the town would like us to go out for a longer contract, we can certainly look at that.
Now, the current contract for those two, for recycling and, um, the bulky stuff, is, is that artificially low, like the, um, refu, the MSW, or no?
Uh, the, we feel that the bulky is artificially low, the recycling is pretty, is pretty standard, is pretty close to where everyone is, or where everyone is coming. So everyone else's contracts tended to fall off further than we did, so we, we caught it, unfortunately, at the beginning end, to the point where there was a change between receiving monies for recycling and paying for monies to go back out. So we think that we're gonna be a little bit better off in that regard, um, now, because we'll be, we're in the mix of it, and we think that our bulky will, will, uh, will change. That's the reason for the two, the two charge.
Thank you.
Do you anticipate that the prices are gonna go up for, uh, transfer station passes for residents?
It's a great question. So the, uh, the Board of Finance asked us to look at that, we're doing an evaluation right now between the number of sticker holders that we have, permit holders that we have for, who have a private hauler, and ones that don't. My feeling is that the ones that have a private hauler necessarily shouldn't, uh, hit any further, they're paying forty-five dollars. Basically, for the, the benefit of utilizing the transfer station, they can come in, use the swap shop, they can get mulch, they can actually, you know, put their recycling away, or their garbage, or just use it when they need to, but they already have a hauler, so their fee is already gonna go up, because we're gonna increase our charge to the haulers coming in. So we try to stay a little bit ahead of what we're being charged, right? So we're being charged, we're being charged ninety-four fifty to go out the door, we're charging ninety-five to come in. The moment we went to ninety-five out the door, we charged a hundred to come in. So now we're at a hundred-and-eleven to go out the door, and the selectmen have told us to go to a hundred-and-fifteen, okay? So that change will be directly reflected back to the resident who's paying their hauler to bring it to us, because they're gonna have to pay more to dump on our floor, if you will. So we don't wanna hit that, those, that faction of people who already have a hauler, because they're already, you know, they're already taking it up. The, um, the people that are paying seventy-five dollars now, who don't have a hauler, are bringing all of their garbage to us. And typically, it's about a ton and a half of garbage per household that's generated per year. So at a hundred-and-eleven dollars a ton, it's around a hundred-and-sixty-five, a hundred-and-seventy dollars a ton that we're paying, a hundred-and-seventy dollars a household, we're paying out the door, right? For their garbage to come in, we're charging seventy-five coming in. So the feeling is that there should be a correction there. So the Board of Finance has asked us to look at that, and that's the reason why we're looking at the two separate sections of permit holders, to see how many there are, and then what that, if we change that fee, well, how much revenue would that bring in? And that'll be a decision between, uh, the Board of Finance, and then the Board of Selectmen actually set that fee. So we'll have to go back to them.
That makes a lot of sense, because the prices for private hauling are going up, just from my bill, from, you know, the private hauler that we have, it, it's been going up considerably, probably for the same reasons that you're talking about. So it, it's good to look at a two-tiered system.
Right, quite possibly, yeah, I mean, there's other things that go into that as Right, quite possibly. I mean, there's other things that go into that as well. I mean, he's got, you know, he's got his own costs of machinery, which we see is going up, you know, fuel, all those things that are going up. Um, but yeah, that's the reason why we don't want to hit the, uh, hit the lower tier, so to speak. The ones that already are going to be paid, they're already going to be getting hit with that increase. We shouldn't have to hit them twice.
What about the curbside composting? What does that cost?
So the curbside composting, um, we are just below a break-even point, okay? So, um, now I have to redo the calculation because that was based upon the last, uh, charge that we had. So I haven't redone the calculation. It was basically that we had to have fifteen hundred pounds, uh, um, coming in every week in order for us to offset what was going for a charge going out, okay, if you will, right? So say how much was coming in and how much it costs us to go out with a curbside compost. That we pay seventy-five dollars for, for a pick, okay? Uh, during the winter, they come once a week, during the summer, they come twice a week only because of smell. And then we pay five dollars per totter. We usually have about ten to twelve totters. So it's only about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty dollars per pick. Um, and if we can get the, uh, more composting, all right? That'll mean that that volume is not going out the door and we're not paying for that volume to go out the door, if you will, okay? So that volume not going out the door, there's a price reduction on that volume not going out the door. That's why I have to redo the calculation because last time was calculated on the fact that we were paying ninety-five out the door. Now we're paying a hundred and eleven. So I think that that number that we have, that break-even point comes down. And at that point in time, I think pretty much right now, we're probably breaking even with the, uh, with the whole endeavor. Um, but it also is asking people to recycle more and asking people to be a little bit more involved. So the more we get them to recycle, the more they're going to start thinking about the other avenues, the other waste streams that they have in their house and possibly recycle even more, right? So once we get them to do full composting, we can get them to drop their stuff up at the swap shop. Maybe they bring things to the thrift shop, they do other things instead of just putting it into the waste stream, if you will. Um, we are looking, we, we, we went last week, uh, Donnie and I went, uh, to Stanford to see, uh, an actual, what they have. It's, it's really a dehumidifier or it's basically, uh, brings out all the moisture in the content. But it's, it's really takes your compost, your food compost, your food waste and brings it down to a viable product over twenty-four hours. They got a grant for the machine. We're looking at trying to see if we can't do the exact same thing through a sustainable CT grant. And at that point in time, we could then hopefully increase our volume. Not necessarily need curbside composting because we can do it in-house and then utilize that and leave that for the residents to either use on their rose bushes or their gardens or what have you. And it's another amenity as far as what they would want to do to, uh, augment their soils. We already have our leaf mulch and we would have food compost as well. So we're looking at that, that, uh, that possibility, um, at the transfer station. And then that should hopefully increase some of the, uh, additional food waste, um, use, uh, and then, uh, and decrease our overall costs. But there is a, there is a, you know, there is a revenue side that you don't see on the expense side as far as that, you know, we're getting the amount of, amount of waste that's going out, we're actually, you know, we're paying for that, we're paying for it to come in as well. So there's a, there's a break-even there as well. We don't, we don't net it out on our expense. We have an expense side and a revenue side, but there is a savings on the other side.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
How do you know who has a contract with a hauler and who doesn't?
They have to bring in a receipt or a contract.
The resident.
The resident does. When they actually, so it's an online system. They come in and they, they, uh, they file online. They can toggle between, Bob's helped us incredibly on this. They toggle between a private hauler and non-private hauler. And then on that, they actually have to attach not only the, a copy of the registration to show that they, you know, what car that they own. So we, so we know what plate it is, but also a copy of their bill. So we know that they're actually paying a hauler.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. If they're at a condo, we already know they have a hauler. If they're not at a condo and they're in a present, you know, regular residence, then we ask for proof. The, uh, and then, uh, to further go down, the, uh, the wastewater treatment plant. Overall, there's a, there's a slight increase that has to do with, uh, our outside sludge hauling contracts. And it's another year, so we have a twenty thousand dollar increase for that. Um, our pipe cleaning, we're trying to come through and we do one-third of our system per year. Uh, and then we have some trouble areas that we do multiple times during the year. And we would like to increase that amount, what we do on our trouble areas so that we don't have a problem with waste getting backed up and into a residence or into a, into a property. And then we have a little bit of an increase in our chemicals for our, our buildings and grounds. And that's really for our chemical treatments for trying to keep our zinc and our phosphorus lower. Um, John already spoke about parks, the nature center, the, the change in the nature center is strictly based upon usage of utilities. We pay for the utilities at the nature center and it's basics strictly based upon what we saw their usage over the years being. And we could drop, drop that number down. Um, the tree service itself, it's flat. We asked for an increase, um, in the previous year. That allowed us to go to twelve months of bidding, so one bid per month. And, uh, we were having, we were successful in one year doing that. We'd like to see exactly how that plays out in the next year before we come back for an increase or, or an adjustment. And then town utilities itself, that driver, we're just adding in a three percent driver for Aquarian and a five percent driver for Eversource. Now, Eversource, we figure is going to try to go higher. They come to PURA every single year for an eight to twelve percent increase and they get dropped down. And the exact same thing for Aquarian. They ask for a five to eight percent or more. We've kept it at three percent. We feel that that will probably be, be standard. And the, the Aquarian one pays for our hydrants. We rent all of our hydrants. We have four hundred or so hydrants, four hundred and eight hydrants, I believe it is. And then we, uh, have to rent the pipe associated with it. So all the pipe that's in the ground, we rent that or lease that from them. And then the exact same thing for Eversource. That's for all of our overhead lights. So all the Cobra lights that you see in the downtown area, we lease those from the, from the utility companies. So we pay for a little bit of electricity, what they estimate the light would be, and then they take care of all the maintenance. So if there's a problem with it, they come in and fix it or replace it, um, or remove it if we don't need it. So that kind of gives you the whole driver as to where we are across the board, uh, which makes up that two point three percent increase. Anything on operating?
So you're operating, you kept below inflation.
We tried, yeah, we tried.
The only question that I have is, I'm sorry, Rita, is I just want everybody to be informed. There is a maintenance cost to the Board of Ed building totaling two hundred and forty thousand, I believe.
A hundred and forty, a hundred and forty.
A hundred and forty for the town, but the total carrying cost for the building is two hundred and forty thousand, right? The town only pays a hundred and twenty.
The town doesn't pay anything, the Board of Ed pays.
Well, it comes from the town.
It's, that's correct, just a different pair of pants. So it's not, not on my side, it's in a different pocket, right? So it's in a different pocket.
But I don't think that most of us were aware that there was a carrying cost so high. Was that a bid in our contract?
That was not. WFL was there and that, that's, that was already managing that property when we acquired it. They, and, and the Board of Ed, the, the, at that point in time, the, the partners who own the property, uh, the town, Board of Ed and, and the other partner that owns the other parcel, they determined that they wanted to continue forward with WFL.
Do you know how long that contract is?
No, I don't.
In existence?
How long it's been in existence?
No, no. In other words, when it expires?
No, I don't. I can get you that answer, but I don't have that answer.
Is that something we could talk to BOE?
Yes.
As far as what?
We, we can bring this up at the.
You can ask, yeah, certainly. You know, it's, it's on their side of the ledger now. They was, was in essence a pass-through cost from them to us and then back out. Remember, we, we acquired it before the BOE got moved in, right? So we had to have it on our side of the ledger because we were paying until that time. And then once we went through the renovations and the Board of Ed moved in, because he couldn't double dip, the Board of Ed was already paying for thirty-nine locusts. Couldn't ask them to pay for two. So we paid for that carrying cost for the timeframe and now the Board of Ed is taking that over.
So it was in place and they just inherited it?
Correct.
Because they took it over.
Well, it was their choice. They didn't take over, they bought the building. They could have changed the management or left it to the town to do it. Or the Board of Ed to do it.
We, we.
The Board of Ed takes care of their own buildings.
That's correct.
So they could have had their own staff take care of that building.
They had a property manager at the previous location that they had and, and I think that they wanted to stay with that, but I won't speak for Dr. Lotzey.
I'm sure they checked all that out.
Yeah, we were, we're not the. The building became a condo with three units, so with the building isn't fully the town building. Because we sold off some units. Yeah, we, we bought the building and then made it into a condo and then sold the unit.
So we have multiple tenants sharing in the maintenance costs.
Correct.
Right, right. So it wasn't just a town decision, there was other, um, owners.
Tiger, are, are most of the salaries and wages in this page in your operating budget, are most of those for union-represented employees and those are negotiated for periods of time like, I mean, like the schools?
That's correct. The majority of them are, you know. There's not that many, the, only the upper management tier. Um, so they're either in the DPW union or in the, or in the Town Hall Union. We have a couple of members in the Downhole Union and then the majority of our staff are in the DPW Union. They're at the end of their contract term, so they'll be looking to go forward. And then management typically follows what the DPW, um, agrees to.
Hey Tiger.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you for spending so much time with us.
It's all good.
All these meetings that we've had, so, um, uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
But I have a question and he may have answered this and so forgive me for being redundant. But, um, for highway, for salaries over time, that's up, it's, it's seventy-six thousand three hundred. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, that's the railroad offset line. So that's the, right. So we calculate out exactly how much time we would be spending there. And then based upon that, we, uh, determine that. And unfortunately, at present, the railroad account can't handle it. Eventually, we're hoping that it'll come back and the railroad fund will increase once ridership is back and everything's back and use it a lot. Um, and at that point in time, we should see that, that, um, that expense line go and be credited back.
Railroad fund is funded with parking revenues?
Yes. And through COVID, we didn't charge, you know, we continued to allow people to continue forward. So therefore, there was a deficit in, uh, in the revenue at that point in time. Um, so it just can't handle the carrying cost at present. Anything else on operating or?
All set.
Okay, the, uh, the next would be capital. So our capital budget, uh, at first go, uh, was twenty-eight million dollars or fifty-four percent increase over last year, ten million dollars. And at present, it stands at eighteen million nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. It's, uh, our total increase is six hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars or three point four-two percent year-over-year. Um, a kind of, there were several, uh, accounts or departments that actually had changes. Um, there was changes in town buildings, there was changes in the sewers, there was a slight change in the, in, uh, the parks, um, itself. And then in the fields, uh, our infrastructure in our parks were the changes. There was no change in engineering and no change on highway or transfer station overall. The, uh, the major changes or the major numbers that we have, we have three million dollars for our pavement management program. That's up from two and a half million dollars. We had two and a half million dollars for twenty years. Um, and we just can't hold that number anymore. So that number was, uh, you know, with, with a two percent increase in inflation year-over-year, a modest two percent increase, we'd be paying around three point eight million dollars for work. We're only asking for three million. So, um, and the reason for that is, uh, I, I said this to the Rotary this morning or this afternoon was our first ton of asphalt that we laid during this program in two thousand and three, we paid fifty dollars and fifty cents a ton. The bids that I just got are, are at a hundred and sixty dollars a ton. So I'm three times the cost. So there's no way I can keep it all within the two and a half million dollars anymore. It doesn't matter what techniques we use or what we, uh, what we analyze and determine. I just can't keep that number down any further. So we're actually having to ask for an increase. I have a two point two million dollars for Lakeview Avenue culvert. That's for both the engineering and the construction. This is a thirty thousand foot view on the, how much it's going to cost. It's two million dollars what we think for the, uh, for the culvert itself. And we added, uh, ten percent for, uh, engineering, modest ten percent for engineering to get us to the two point two. Parking lot improvements, we have three separate lots that we're looking at doing. The locust lot, the lumberyard lot and, and, um, the railroad lot, um, as well as, I'm sorry, and as well as the Banco pool. So the locust lot is already previously funded and the Banco pool is going to come out of the pool fund. The railroad lot will come out of the, the railroad fund and the lumberyard lot will come out of the parking fund. So that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars is actually allocated to other, other funds and won't hit necessarily, um, while it will be bonded, the bonded costs we covered underneath a different fund. Um, we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sidewalk improvements. This is for work behind the, uh, behind the Y predominantly to do Putnam Road and then to do some other sidewalks in town. We had floated the idea to the Board of Finance to drop this to five hundred thousand dollars. They actually put the seven fifty back in because they felt strongly the fact that we should continue to manage the sidewalks that we have. So we have a, a, a large backlog of, uh, of work that needs to be done for not only our network, but also to improve the network. So I think that that was a prudent decision by them. Uh, Waveney, the HVAC system at four million dollars was removed from the budget. I should say deferred into a future year, um, not to be funded at present. And then we have some additional work that we need to do at Waveney as far as some improvements to our, uh, the waste, uh, lines, the water lines coming in and, uh, some drainage in and around the, uh, the, the facility itself.
Tiger, can you speak to the HVAC deferral? What, what happens if it breaks down?
If it breaks down, we'll have to come back and ask for some money at that point in time.
But there'd be a lag where we wouldn't be able to use the building?
There would be a lag. There, right, there would be a situation whereby depending upon what time of year it happens. If it, God forbid, it happened in the middle of the winter, then yes, we would have to probably, you know, work on that and shutter, not shutter the building, but bring everyone out because we may not, might not be able to maintain a proper temperature for people who are in it. Um, if it happens during the summer, but not necessarily, there's no way to see at present. So it's a little bit of a different situation at that point. Um, but that was, that was the decision that was, that we discussed and, and at the time, we have it, excuse me, we have it engineered, we have it designed, we have it ready. So the question would be just to put it out to bid and have it come back in. Again, the only problem that we would have is material procurement at that point and whether or not we could get the materials, um, on a, in a timely manner. So, yeah, there is a little bit of a, um, it's, it's, I won't say it's guesswork, but at the same time, we can't guarantee that it's going to fail. We can't guarantee that it's going to survive or, or, you know, be successful, so.
I suppose part of that implicit logic there is that, that there are no critical functions occurring in Waveney House. So if we had to incur a break, we'd have some revenue loss, some inconvenience, but it's not like, it's not like losing the use of Town Hall or something like that.
Well, I don't want to say that John's not critical, so the, uh, so.
Well, we'll find, we'll find a place for John.
But, but we would, we would be able to, be able to relocate his staff to other, other areas, but yes. You know, that's a, that's a, it is, it's, you know, you're, you're correct in, in, in that. It's not a Town Hall, it's not a police department, it's not a fire department. You know, even, even our DPW garage, in essence, we might be able to find a way to work around that as well or the parks garage work around it. So, um, yeah, to your point, yes.
Cause you didn't bump it one year, you bumped it.
We pushed it out to.
Five years.
We pushed it out to a point where we, you know, it's, yeah, we're just, it'll linger at that point in time. We'll bring it back and we'll see if there's a, you know, we'll, we'll continue to monitor it and see. And if we start to develop leaks or we start to develop problems, then we'll be back at that point. Um, for the nature center, there were two changes. In the Audubon House, uh, it was determined that, um, while we had asked to, uh, renovate it so that the, uh, nature center could utilize it for a twos program or other programming. It was determined that we're going to knock the building down. So we asked them to keep fifty thousand dollars in for a, a number to, to, uh, knock the building down and then bring the, uh, area back to its naturalized state, replant it, what have you. It's in a kind of a nice setting in there. And on the visitor's center, the ramp itself, we're going to knock the ramp down, but we don't have to put in a new staircase to the second floor. Based upon usage and occupancy loads on the second floor, there's already a second means of egress. And in speaking to the, uh, fire marshal, it's not necessary to put an outside staircase in. The thought was, don't put an outside staircase in if the nature center is going to think about either knocking that building down or renovating that building. But we want to get the, uh, the liability off the building, which is the ramp itself.
Can I correct you? Uh, it's not the visitor's center, it's the greenhouse.
Sorry, it's the greenhouse, I apologize. The, um, the highway department, there was no change, um, there, transfer station, the same. Parks equipment John has spoken about. Dunning Stadium, uh, phase two, so we had come last year for a, uh, four-phased approach to Dunning. Last year was approved Dunning Phase One, which was the entryway, donor wall and press box. Um, and then phase two was going to be the circulation. And then phase three, uh, was going to be, uh, the bathrooms and, uh, and then face, phase four was going to be the concession. We've, uh, pushed phase two out a year since we're, uh, focusing our, our work on capo itself. It was felt that we should focus, um, our work on one area and then necessarily defer. So the press box is not going to be built in June of twenty-four, it'll be built in June of twenty-five. If it's built in June of twenty-five, that means it pushes the, the, uh, circulation work that we wanted to do to June of twenty-six. Um, and in so doing, that doesn't hurt us with any, uh, any other settlement or agreement that we might have out there as far as accessibility or, um, being able to work or, or move between one facet or another, between the high school and Dunning or Dunning and the tennis courts. What have you, we'll still be within timeframe on that.
You have all those drawings ready for bid?
For what?
For the, uh, Dunning Stadium Phase Two?
Dunning Stadium Phase Two, we have, we have schematic design, not, not conceptual, not design drawings at that point. Capo is in the design development phase, yes. So they're already, they're well on their way. We've already met with, um, uh, Inland Wetlands and P&amp;Z twice and Engineering once. So they're, uh, and they're looking to go to P&amp;Z and Inland Wetlands next month to start the process on their permitting for, uh, for that work. But capo is well on its way to, uh, so, to get to construction for hopefully a build through this year and, and utilizing it next spring.
Okay, okay.
But has it been bidded?
It has not been bid, no. We typically don't come at bid time. We always come prior. There's, there's no way to do it. I can't ask a contractor to bid on a two million or a six and a half million dollar project without having the monies available. It's unfair to the contractor to ask him to bid six and a half million dollars. We've never come with a bid number. It, it, we've come with it, what, this number at six and a half million dollars was done by a professional cost estimator. It started at thirteen million, it went to eleven million, it's down to six and a half million. We value engineered down to this point. It's been looked at for about six months or more, um, at this phase. So we're confident on the numbers themselves, but we've never come to you with a bid number. It's just, it's, I don't think it's fair to the contractor to ask them to do that. We could ask the contractor to do it once and if we don't fund that project, I can't get that contractor to ever come back again. Cause it's a, it's an inordinate amount of time and money for them to come and bid a, a project of this size.
So I understand focusing on one or the other, what, 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 what was behind the decision of not doing Dunning and doing capo instead?
Mike, you want to come up? So why don't we hold that question? I'll finish, uh, I'll finish the wastewater plant and the, uh, and then, uh, then we can come back and that'd be fair. Um, so the wastewater plant itself, we have, the request is for four million dollars. It's a five million dollar renovation of our UV system, our ultra-viable disinfection system. Um, it is twenty-four years old. It's, it was built with the plant. It was state-of-the-art at the time that it was built. Most plants now have a UV system. We were one of the first ones to ever go down this road. Um, in twenty sixteen, the regulations changed and whereby instead of having one unit, you actually have to have multiple units. You have to have a redundancy. Um, specifically if your, um, single means of disinfection is UV, you actually have to have a second. You have to have a backup in case one fails, you'd have another. Because if we fail at that point in time and we fail to make permit, what is leaving our plant in five and a half miles will hit the sound. And there's a shell fishery right there where it hits the sound. So not only would we be not making permit, we would be fined for not making permit. And then in the end, they would tell us to make the necessary, um, improvements to, so that we would have redundancy. So at this point in time, it's approximately a five, um, million dollar project. Um, and we already have one million dollars set aside, so the ask is for four million dollars. And then the other portion of that is that we are, uh, working towards phase two of our inflow and infiltration project. We're already working almost all the way through our first phase of five hundred thousand dollars. So that's when we came through and we did smoke testing throughout the entire system. And any areas of concern that we saw, we went out and we dye tested. So areas that we thought we had cross-contamination, meaning where our storm system was actually, um, coming to our wastewater plant, we went back and dye tested and dye is basically putting in a little bit of non-toxic green dye into the, into the, into the, into the storm sewer and then seeing where it comes out. It should come out in a stream, so we made mill pond green. We should have done it during, thank, you know, St. Patrick's Day.
Now would have been good, yeah.
But we also made one of our clarifiers green, so we know that we had a cross-contamination at some point in time. So if we can get rid of the cross-contaminations and the, uh, what we call at that point in time inflow, the majority of our problems are with inflow, we can then reduce the, the storm surge that we're seeing. So when we're seeing on a storm, we're seeing our, our normal, we're normally operating about a million gallons per day, jump to seven million gallons a day during a storm event, we can actually mitigate that and bring that down. If we can bring that down, we'll bring down our operating costs and, uh, stress on our, our, uh, our overall plant and our system. I don't know if you have any other questions on capital before we get into parks further?
Yeah, I do.
Sure.
Big picture question.
Sure.
How do you get from thirteen million down to five? I mean, there's a lot involved in there.
Now you're talking, now you're talking capo, so let's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going back to UV.
UV? I wasn't at thirteen million, I was at six and a half.
Six and a half.
What started at thirteen?
Capo field.
That was capo. Okay.
My mistake.
So, yeah, wastewater, the UV system started at, UV system at a 30,000 foot view, the engineer gave us four and a half to six and a half. Okay. That was his range. I put in six and a half because I don't want to come in at four and a half and then tell you, oh, by the way, it's six and a half. So I put in six and a half and during the timeframe between October, right? And now he's been dialing it in. He said, hey, we're at about 5 million. I said, okay, thank you. He's still in his range now, right? He's still in that four and a half to six and a half, but he's tighter now at five and I already have one. So we just need a net of four.
My mistake on the 13.
No, that's okay. It's a great question though.
I have a couple of questions. Do you want to handle this one first?
No, no, why don't we do, why don't we do all the regular and then Mike can start talking about capo, you know?
Okay.
About that. Okay?
Paving locust lot. Does that mean that the discussions are off about doing anything at locusts?
Not at present. No, what we're trying to do is we're seeing, you know, right now that the lot is pretty much where it's, it's almost a liability for people, right? So we're just trying to make it safe. So we're trying to do the least cost alternative to buy us somewhere up to the year, up to about five years worth of work in order to then have. Excuse me?
How much was that again?
I, I only have estimates at present. I have estimates for various techniques and we're trying to work on that, but it's not very much money. In paving, let me say. It's, it's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money in paving.
I had, I had asked you about, um, who determines the type of roof that's going to go on the town hall annex?
So that, that, uh, we've been asked to, we've been asked.
Bring up something that's controversial, but it is controversial. So someone's got to decide and have an agreement that that's a good thing.
So at, at present, we, you know, our original thought was that we were going to replicate it only because that was what was there. We've been asked to look at the possible change, either a change in materials, a change in design, things of that nature. You know, because to replicate what's theirs would be a little bit more costly than just say putting in a normal asphalt roof, right? So we are looking at those alternatives right now. We will probably ask for input from others, uh, to help us make that decision. Some other town fathers, and then we'll determine at that point in time what the overall roof will look like. We've been asked to look at whether we could put solar on it as well. So we're looking at that also. So, so a little bit, you know, it's a steeper roof. It's a little bit tougher.
Are you considering a metal roof at all?
We haven't, no. We've been looking at shingles only, but in my head, I had thought about a metal roof as well, but I, we haven't gotten to that point yet. We were just asked to look at different alternatives, but we haven't even started that process yet.
Just from the replacement cost, I think it should be included in the possibility.
We can certainly look at that. Thank you.
Okay. And my final question is, um, doing, doing the roof at Urban House, I thought there's discussions about whether, whether or not we're keeping Urban House. So why would we put 150,000 into the roof?
It's not 150 for the roof. So there's, it's, uh, it's for us to hire a consultant at $20,000 for the roof itself. There's, the rest of it is for the windows. The windows are rotting. So it's to replace, so help with the windows and paint and caulk around each one. Cause the windows are wood. The building's brick, the windows are wood. Okay? And then we've got slate and then we've got a flat roof on top, right? So we got EPDM on top. So the overall thought is to hire a consultant to help us with the roof structure because it's two separate materials. That's part of the monies, but the majority of the monies are to take care of the rest of the, of all the window treatments and all the rot that we have walking around the building. If you walk around the building, you'll be able to see it. Um, it's all peeling away and, and the wood is exposed and starting to rot. So that's the money for that.
Question. So if we are going to study whether or not we're retaining the building, why are we spending all this money on analyzing how to repair?
The board of finance, the board of finance determined that they would allow us to go forward with these while we were determining a use of the building. So they gave us one more year and said that they wouldn't want to let, see it go into further disrepair, but this was the last monies that they would spend. And then, uh, and then we would have to come up with an overall use of the building before they would give us monies to replace the roof. Cause the roof is a lot more money than that. It's about 700,000.
Penny, the building is occupied at this point. IT's there and there's some nonprofits there.
Yeah, that's part of the study. It's whether or not you retain it.
Correct. Right. So to Christina's point, we have, IT is in the, is in the apartment on the side. And then we have the, the garage itself is storage for us. As far as that's where all of our centralized equipment is, that's where we keep, we buy our paper in bulk. We buy our toiletries in bulk.
Very aware of what's there. I just.
All right.
Until you've determined what you're going to do with the building, I just can't see putting money into it.
Well, we haven't yet. So approving this budget item doesn't mean that we're going to spend the money. We still have time before we actually bond and, you know, do a bonding authorization.
That, and then I still have to go back to the board of selectmen for final approval of the contract. So at any point in time, it could stop at that point.
So there's room for advocacy still. Can I ask you a question?
You can do anything, Luke.
I got soaked up into Penny's question.
I'm sorry?
Forget it. I'll think of it in a second.
Okay.
I'll do the rock to move on.
Hmm? That's fine. So if, while you're thinking about other ones, we'll go, we'll go to capo itself. So we had a question on capo and we had a question on Dunning.
Can we just do the questions at the end?
Huh?
Can we just do the questions at the end? So if it's okay, I'll, I'll be happy to take some questions at the end, but, um, there's a few things that I had to say before I came here tonight. So, uh, first of all, thank you for having me.
Tell me who you are.
I was about to get to that.
Oh, thank you.
So my name is Mike Benevento. I am the chairman of the New Canaan Athletic Foundation. I lived here in town for 21 years now. I have four children that have gone through the public school system, currently in the public school system. And I'm here to talk about a couple of things.
Welcome, Mike.
Excuse me?
I said, welcome. We're, we're very excited. Me in particular is very excited to hear this.
I would pump your brakes on that for a second. So why is this important? 70% of the New Canaan High, the high, New Canaan High School students participate in athletics at the high school level. 3,000 students participate in youth sports in the town of New Canaan. I'm coming here tonight, making a statement with the unanimous, unanimous support of my board. This is not meant to be a manifesto crying sour grapes. This is just the reality of the situation that we're in tonight. And I will tell you, before I walked into, out of my door tonight, my wife said to me, make sure you protect our good name. But she could, she said that because she could tell the level of frustration that I had, was at and have been at, uh, recently. Uh, for better or for worse, the New Canaan Athletic Foundation has turned into a repository of frustration and complaint when it comes to athletics in this town. Athletics in this town is governed by a broken and outdated system. The 1997 Fields Committee Report is still governing, is still the governing, operating document for the operations and fields in this town. The NCAF was in fact established because of the broken system. In 2016, Dunning Stadium, the premier athletic facility in the town of New Canaan, and I would argue in the state of Connecticut, was saved from condemnation and no play in the fall of 2016, a hundred percent by private money. The athletic director came to us in the middle of June of 2016 and said, "Dunning Stadium has failed its GMX test. There will be no play in the fall of 2016 if we don't rip and replace the service, the surface" at a cost of $750,000 that because of the system that was set up, had to be 100% privately raised. That was the origin of the athletic foundation. And in two weeks, we raised $750,000 privately, did a rip and replace of that surface in the summer of 2016 and saved the varsity football field and program from having to play all of their games away. In addition to all the other athletic facility, all the other athletic contests that take place on that stadium. I've shared my frustration with the partnership privately with many of our partners over the last couple of years. And to recall, the New Canaan Athletic Foundation is a public and private partnership with both the town of New Canaan and the Board of Education. Tonight, I'm here to share it publicly. People give money, but more importantly, they give time. Myself, hundreds of hours, weekly calls with Richter and Seegan, Turgon, Turner Construction, yet I'm questioned constantly about the detail and communication from uninformed people that don't do their homework, make public statements, misrepresent, misrepresent competent conversations, all for, in my opinion, the sake of politics or positioning. I'm here to say that I will die on the hill of our mission statement. We are all sports and community. We don't represent any single sport. In fact, we represent every sport and we represent the entire community. It bothers me when I hear things like, we're building a baseball field. This is pay for play. Why are we just building a baseball field? I'm constantly reminded of the generosity of this town and the success of public-private partnerships, the library, the conservancy, the garden club, the powerhouse theater. I'm here to tell you tonight, if you lose that, you really will have a problem. This is not a threat. It's just the reality. I can truthfully say that the frustration with the partnership has cost this town millions of dollars in philanthropy because the citizens at time come back with a lack of faith in the partner. The NCAF was meant to solve the issues that we had. We created an institutional infrastructure that was based off of well-resourced history. Thanks to Leo Carl, who helped us work on this. In 2008, we wrote a 20-page white paper that's on our website and is accompanied by corresponding PowerPoint slides. To give a little bit of history, in 2017, after we did the rip and replace, we embarked on a bold new project, which was Water Tower 1, 2, 3 and a complete track rebuild at a cost of a little over $7 million. That project went about $500,000 over budget. I was publicly skewered by former members of this council, but I took those bullets and again, uninformed bullets and arrows because the reason for the $500,000 overbuild was the fact that Water Tower 1 was originally built on a three-foot decline and had to be not rip and replaced, but actually completely rebuilt at an additional cost of $500,000. Nobody seemed to know that when they decided to write editorials about me. So I decided in the fall of 2018 to write an editorial myself. Because I walked out at Water Tower 2 after a day that it had rained the entire day and I saw a varsity football team practicing on Dunning Stadium, a JV football team playing a game on Water Tower 1, a youth field hockey team playing a game on Water Tower 2, and a soccer practice happening on Water Tower 3. That never, ever would have happened if we hadn't built those projects. And I wrote in the editorial and I said, this is what it's all about. I'll take the arrows. I'll take the bullets. I'll be the person that stands up here publicly. But I'll do it because it's about the kids and that's what's important. I've said many times, these frustrations are not new. In fact, they're age old. I see a consistent rope-a-dope strategy in our partnership. We just wait out the complaints. The kids will ultimately age out. The parents will get tired fighting. It becomes the next generation's problem. It takes years to figure it out and then ultimately reach a fever pitch. And then here we are again. Rinse, wash, repeat. The NCAF was meant to solve for all of this. And every time I want to quit, and believe me, there's been plenty of times. This is the only thing that keeps me going. If we don't fix it, then it remains broken and the system wins. So I'm here to again, tonight, to ask for something as a result of my frustration and this 2024, 25 budget process. The board of finances, uh, as Tiger said, we came with a project, uh, to do capo field that was originally bid out or cost out at 13 million dollars. And we'd asked them to build something that was as nice as it could possibly be. And then we value engineered that down from 13 million to 10 million. The original scope that we had given them or that our, our architects had talked about was a project that would be four to $5 million. When Tiger came into the budget project, he asked for $5 million or estimated a $5 million project where $2.5 million would come from the athletic foundation. We'd asked the town for $2.5 million. The project came in at $13 million. We engineered it down to cost value, engineered it down to 10, 11 million dollars. We didn't ask the town for more money. We stayed at $2.5 million. We've value engineered it down to $6.5 million. We didn't ask the town for any more money. We said, okay, the private money will come in for $4.5 million. We're going to do that again. We're going to try to value engineer it down one more time. We never asked the town for more money. We said, this is something that we have strong support for. There's a lot of people that want this. It's not just a baseball field. It's additional turf, which is the biggest bottleneck in this town. I promise you, I've heard that over and over again. And yet, after the second time I came back to board of finance, they have passed you a budget that cut that by $500,000. $500,000 on a $177 million budget. I can just tell you, that has real consequences when it comes to publicly supporting a public-private partnership. Penny, you asked why we're not doing Dunning Stadium phase two?
I actually did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rita?
Yeah, I asked for it.
I'll tell you exactly why. Because I sat in this chair last year and $2 million was appropriated and yet things hit a bottleneck. That project that needed to get done in the summer of 2023 didn't get done for a lot of bureaucratic reasons, political reasons. I don't know exactly why. But I know it couldn't get done in the summer of 2023. You know what happens when projects don't get done? Donors fade. Not only donors fade, they get frustrated and they tell their friends and they tell their neighbors and they lose confidence. And I'm the person that stands up here and says, I've built this institutional infrastructure. I promise you, we have a good partnership with the town and the board of ed. And I promise you, what I'm telling you, we have good support from them. Time and time again, I get whacked down. That's your answer to that question. Now I've got to go back to my donors and said, yeah. We started with a $13 million project. We've gotten it down to $6.5 million and they took away 500,000. So what I'm actually going to ask for with some advice was to think about a special appropriation. Cause I know, I've been doing this long enough to know the cadence of how this works. First selectman, parks and rec, board of finance, town council, town council can only cut. They can't send it back. I've actually learned today under section C415 of the town charter. I've done my research. That you can actually send it back.
We can send it back.
We can't send it back.
Can send it back. My understanding, it's unprecedented. It's never been done before.
That's okay. Doesn't mean it can't be.
Well, let me be your first. Like I said, I didn't come here to cry sour grapes. I'm just telling you, I am the repository for complaints and frustration when it comes to athletics in this town. We set up this infra, institutional infrastructure for this reason. And if this public-private partnership fails, it will have ramifications that go well beyond the athletic foundation.
So, oh, go ahead, Luke. Sorry.
I'm saying, I think you were prepared to, to address this. And I think that, that this conversation we, we knew was, and, and I appreciate all the hard work and effort and, and the, uh, emotional investment into this conversation because your passion is felt, right? And then your dedication to the town and everything you've done is felt, right? I don't know you personally that well, but knowing that, that what you just presented is like, this is who we want in that position.
This is me being calm, Luke.
This is me being low-key too.
So Mike, can I, can I just open up this up as like one of the, the newest people to this, this body? So just, so first of all, respecting how hard you have worked and, and the great generosity of your entity. And also longtime New Canaan resident, former athlete, know that they've been talking about baseball fields for over 40 years. But I, I just also want you to understand like the perspective of someone like myself coming to this, coming to this in a very difficult year, understanding also that the mandate in a, in a broader way, this is a very difficult budget year. So, so some of this energy coming from you is confusing to me just in that like, I, I want to be able to ask the questions I want because I'm trying to be a fiscally responsible legislator. So please understand, if I'm asking the questions, it, it, it bears no disrespect to you or to many of the donors who I assume may, might even be friends or colleagues. Cause that's what I'm.
I totally appreciate that. And, and I should have mentioned, I meant to mention it at some point. This is one of the things that because of the system that we set up, back in 2018 and 2019, when we wrote the memorandum of understanding, we laid out a master plan. None of this should be a surprise to anybody. In fact, we sat here in January of last year when we were talking about building the Dunning Stadium phase two, that we were coming with capo field next year at a cost of four to $5 million. So that, that to me, and it's totally fair, you should ask all the questions you want. And believe me, I've got a lot of institutional knowledge around this stuff, but, there's a lot of information out there publicly on our website, in the, the white paper, in the master plan that's published on the website. All of this has been available since 2018. And so when people are surprised, that's. And so when people are surprised, that surprises me.
All right, Hillary Ormond has her hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Hillary, please.
Hi, my apologies for being on Zoom, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Mike, could you go into a little bit more detail about the bureaucratic snafus that are, that seem to be delaying Dunning? And are we confident that that would not happen with Capo? And the same situation? I'm trying to understand the root of the frustration with the Dunning project, which we had been, we were very supportive of. And, you know, whether we're, that similar concern exists for Capo? And losing donors, like you said, I just don't have a lot of clarity on what happened.
I think it doesn't make, it's not going to do anybody good to talk about the issues that we faced last spring and last summer. I think that I can confidently say, with the support of the town, I've had long conversations with the Selectmen and others, and the Board of Ed. I think Dr. Lutzey was here at Board of Finance and said how supportive he was of the project. I know that Jay Egan is supportive of the project. These are people that all attend our weekly meetings with Richter and Seegan and Turner Construction. So, I'd be surprised, and honestly, that's what I'm fearful of is that I know the momentum that we have from the donors. This is a bold project, we're already, you know, well over what we thought it would initially cost, but people are supportive and they want to see it pushed through, they want to do their best. And I don't think we'll run into those bureaucracies. What we are going to run into is time constraints because people want to see this built in time for the spring of 2025. We're told that we're still on pace to do that with P&amp;Z and Wetlands and other things that are a little bit out of my control. But everybody knows we're working backwards towards that timeline, and I'm told that we're still on time to do that.
And is there a discussion about restructuring? And maybe this doesn't go into the budget discussion, but, you know, to the extent that, if, I don't know if you need a Town Council liaison to be integrated here or, you know, how structurally it can be better supported so that projects aren't ballooning or budgets aren't, not that they are, but, you know, you just had mentioned that, sorry, my kids are in the background. You had mentioned that, you know, some of this delay increases prices, or maybe somebody else said that on the panel. But anyway, I just think there might be an opportunity here to think about the structure of the Fields Committee or however things are divvied up, so that the complaints aren't all falling on you.
There are two governing bodies or two governing documents. The Fields Committee, which is 1997, that I referenced, that absolutely needs to be updated. That, as it reads, serves as, at the pleasure of the Selectman's Office, I believe. And the Memorandum of Understanding that was originally scripted throughout 2018 and signed, is signed by myself, Dr. Lutzey, and the First Selectman. So it's a triple P between the BOE and the Town of New Canaan and the Athletic Foundation.
Okay, thank you.
To follow up on what Hillary just said, I think that part of the problem is that when we hear about it is with an ask for an amount for a project. There's no communication or understanding as to what you, as a foundation, is gearing to, and it may be on your website, but this is the first time I'm hearing about the white papers and that you can get this information on the website. I think there's a lack of communication, at least with the Town Council in general, as to those things. The other thing is that we have a Park and Recs committee, we have an Infrastructure Committee, and if one of us from either end was present at your meeting, then they could be more informed going forward.
So, Christina, thank you, and I anticipated this question. If you refer to the Memorandum of Understanding in 2018, there are six or five ex officio members of the New Canaan Athletic Foundation that are invited to our board meetings on a monthly basis. That refers to the Athletic Director, or somebody from the Board of Education, somebody from Parks and Rec, the First Selectman, somebody from...
DPW.
The DPW. Everybody is invited and gets those emails and is welcome to hear everything that we're saying on a monthly basis at the Athletic Foundation Board Meetings. I would just say that that attendance is lacking.
Okay, I think that that's the second layer of problems to it.
But is that my problem?
Well, it is because it's interfering with your ability to communicate and the lack of support that you're seeing, that's from my standpoint. I don't, to what has just been said, we're not trying to be neither controversial nor come down on you for it, we're trying to understand what it is that the problem is in general. I remember that when the Fields Committee ran into a problem with the fields, and I think it was 2016, I was just new to Town Council in 2015. We heard about it from the Town Council's point of view, that we were, that the project was overrun by about, I don't remember, $650,000? $850,000 around?
$500.
Okay, $500,000. And that the committee knew about it, not necessarily the committee from your standpoint, but the town representatives knew about it and waited until after the election to tell us. And then the gun was to our heads to approve it, or the fields would not be open in time for the high school to be able to use them. That left a mark on the level of trust that one can have on the information. So I welcome more information, I just didn't appreciate it from where it came at the last minute. And I think you understand where I'm coming from.
I definitely understand where you come from. I'm not going to say that mistakes weren't made in the past. I will say that it had nothing to do with not being able to play on those fields. In fact, the $500,000 could have been saved if we value-engineered the lights off of Water Tower 2 and 3, which is what we proposed, to not go over budget. The boards and the town bodies that be decided that we had the fields built and we wanted to have the lights on the field, which is why we had the $500,000 overage. We're talking about something that happened in 2017, which I appreciate, and maybe there was a lack of communication in 2017 around why the budget went over in the first place, which, again, referenced the pitch at Water Tower 1, the existing field, that was originally budgeted for a rip and replace and then had to do a total rebuild. So what was budgeted for $750,000 as a rip and replace turned into a rebuild which cost a million and a half, which is what cost the $500,000 overage. Again, happy to discuss what happened in 2017. I'm just telling you, and I'm saying that I understand mistakes were made. We've learned from those mistakes. We, I, when I say that I try to be overarching in my communications and overarching in my ability to have people come to our board meetings and understand what we're doing, I mean, the whole concept of the Athletic Foundation was transparency. The reason why we took over the collection, I don't want to be a collection agent, the reason why we took over the collection of the player use fee was so there was pure transparency, so the constituents would know when they pay a $25 fee for their child to participate in either youth sports or a recreation program, that 50% of it would go to turf replacement and 50% of it would go to enhancements. Pure transparency. That was, again, frustration that we heard that we solved for. So, I think that this organization is built entirely on transparency. Nobody's doing this for any other reason than...
No, I understand it, I'm not saying it's not transparent. I think the communication has broken down, and I think that under a new administration, there can be more responsibility and assignment as to who should be present at those meetings.
Let me jump in, because we've been at this for a while, and I want to hear everything Mike's saying, but I want to steer this precisely to this issue, and there's larger issues that need to be discussed and addressed, believe me, structurally. And I have some thoughts, we can talk, not right now. But let's get to what we're here for in Capo, right? And Luke, did you want to jump in on precisely that? Or do you want me to just continue on with what I'm about to say?
I'm in full support. I think the transparency, I think we're all kind of speaking the same language. I think this is a huge opportunity. The town in itself, the school system is unbelievable. We're all blessed to have our kids go through the school system, but in the same breath, the sports programs are unbelievable. My kids play all sports, but Mead Park is like, you know, fantastic. And I think this project, and, you know, we have to dial into a little bit more as to what the reasons for the cutting of the $500,000, but I understand your frustration, and it's great that you're bringing it up because, you know, you have the entire board here, you have the entire Town Council listening, and I don't think there's any negativity other than like, we just want to be clear, transparent, and set realistic expectations. I think what you've done, you dedicated a lot of resources and your time to all the efforts that you've done. So I think, you know, we should all be appreciative of your efforts. I'm a big fan.
Can I jump in with, I'm sorry, Mike, you go.
No, go ahead.
No, no, I have to have a series of just like, like basic questions.
Yeah, just, hold on, before you start, let me just make this statement, and please, we'll have the floor. What, Mike, is, I hear you're loud and clear, Mike. Your frustration, and I know you're controlling yourself, and I very much appreciate it. The fact that it's very unfortunate that it's reached a point where you have to come here tonight and lay it out like this. It shows a really decayed process over the course of a long time, and it should never have gotten this far, and that needs to be addressed. On this particular issue, though, I want to go right into it, and I want to understand, which I'll, I'm going to turn the floor over to you in a moment, you can respond to me, but, half a mil was cut. You need that half a mil back in because we need the donors to continue to feel confident that it's a real partnership here, it's authentic and not some phony baloney window dressing, because that's what's kind of being, I think, the perception now is, has formed. So we have to figure out on our end, does it make sense to signal the Town Council's support that the half a mil be put back in because we can't add it in? But we can certainly make it clear that we will not approve a budget that does not have this in it, that's basically our authority. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Next, Mike.
So, my understanding is that the first impetus for this is that New Canaan High School is one of the only high schools in the area that doesn't have a baseball field on campus. So that was the first. So Capo existed, but it's not regulation-grade. But before you even get to the turf, like, you needed to make it. So is that, that was like the beginning?
Capo Field's a regulation 1690 baseball field that's today used for the JV field. We don't, we're the only town in the FCAC that doesn't have a varsity field on its campus.
And this is just, all these questions are basic, it's not me challenging it. So why is it only JV can be at? What makes it not good enough to be a varsity field?
First and foremost, there's no fencing in the outfield. So you have games that are going on while there's men's softball games going on. I've actually witnessed a 40-year-old man collide into a 16-year-old kid in the outfield.
Okay, so part of this, this plan, will have the fencing in it. So, in addition to that, in terms of comparables, I seem to understand, like, Darien has turf, Wilton maybe not, but in terms of our competitors, majority are turf at this point, or?
I, I mean, I'd have to go through field by field. I'm not going to say majority, but I'm going to say, I would say maybe more than majority, I'm literally trying to think off the top of my head.
And I can look.
It's not a minority, let's put it that way.
And so, the cost for this project, a great deal of it is that if you're going to put turf in, you have to change the drainage. Like, so if it was going to remain grass, you wouldn't need the same extensive work on drainage?
That's correct. Well, it depends on the other amenities that would go in. So if there are other amenities for the stadium itself, we've got, you know, the dugouts, the bleachers, things of that nature, that would drive the policy, our drainage policy. So we have a 0% increase in runoff allowed, all right? So, at that point in time, if we increase the impervious area or we increase the change in runoff, per se, because there's different, so different materials have different runoffs, right? So grass is a different type of runoff than blacktop and things of that nature, right? So different coefficients. So at that point in time, we'd have to do analysis and see. And if it tripped our policy, then we would have to do some improvements. This creates a $600,000 increase for just drainage, right? So just drainage improvements alone. We have to be very cognizant of the fact that downstream from this facility, down the hill, okay? Past Lapham Road, all the way down Old Stanford Road, we are having issues on 106 at Jelf Mill and the residents that live along that embankment. So we have to be very cognizant of that. So in this project, there's $600,000 worth of drainage improvements to manage what is, what we're doing here as, for this build.
And I think it's, just as part of the answer to the question, because, yes, having a field on campus is important. I don't think if I was prioritizing, that would be anywhere near the top of the priority. I think the top of the priority is, in fact, turf. The top of the priority is turf because, like I said before, from our donor's standpoint, not only the baseball donors, but from the overall donors of the Athletic Foundation, building a footprint of turf of this size allows for more than 25% additional turf footprint in our athletic facilities at the high school campus. And knowing that that is the biggest bottleneck and the biggest source of frustration, I know that's where we get a lot of support. Because, again, I said at the beginning, this isn't just a baseball field. Yes, it's built in a baseball configuration, but there's lots of things that can happen in the outfield, in the fall months, in the offseason, with field hockey, with soccer, with flag football. All things, again, as I look at it, I see an additional turf footprint, which will help relieve the bottleneck, which is the number-one source of frustration in the youth sports community.
I think you should go back to the point when you said that we had heavy rain pour for, you know, two days, and then you went to the fields, and you had soccer, you had lacrosse, you had football. Like, that speaks volumes that our kids are not having downtime because, you know what, the fields are not available because of the weather conditions. I think that is a super impactful and important comment.
I gave a presentation to Parks and Rec last night where I had a statistic for the 2023 sports season where, in the months of March, April, May, June, September, October, November, which I think is 174 days, we lost 31 days of play, which was about 15.5% of play, where we were totally wiped out, no kids on the field because you live in the Northeast and you weren't able to be outside on fields.
Tucker just mentioned a very interesting concept, and that has to do with the drainage from on high down onto Old Stanford Road. And the same thing happens in the, on the other side of the leaf mulch pile going down onto 106. Why would that be then attributed or assigned to you to rectify that? Why would that not be a town responsibility, given the vulnerability of the downstream people having a problem?
It's only driven by the work. It's not, it's driven by the fact that we're constructing here. The, what, this area waving hasn't been changed in decades. Now we're making the change, we have to then adhere to our policy. But the fact of the, that there's grass here is not contributing, in essence, to the problems down on Old Stanford Road. We don't want to make them worse, if you will. So if I add $600,000 for the drainage up here, I'm not going to solve the problem down on Old Stanford Road. I'm adding $600,000 here so I don't add to the problems on Old Stanford Road. This project will not add. It's good, without this project, we're not, we're not here sitting here saying we need $600,000 for the drainage in this area, no. It's strictly going along with this project.
I was just trying to assign the problem to the right entity.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, thanks for coming, and I could see the passion. I'm a huge sports enthusiast, my son played football, your son.
We appreciate him a lot.
No, I mean, and...
Guy wants to stay championship.
Exactly, no.
Not for nothing.
Amazing, watching that man, and I have a lot of respect. I'm a former athlete, my husband, baseball, my kids played baseball. I mean, I can't say enough about sports. And I agree, I think we should have the Dunning improvements, and I think we should have Capo Field. I think we should have a field on campus. However, just after saying that, I know you feel frustrated. You are not the only person that has come before government asking for money and having to do it more than once, that you are in good company. And be honest, it's not, it's not personal. And I think the problem is, we're trying to figure out, right? We have taxpayers that we're responsible for, and we're trying to prioritize. And so when I look at these, and I think, well, if we're spending money here, maybe we're not spending money elsewhere, and that goes into the decision-making. Actually, my question is a little different. Because, again, I'm not sure about turf. I think we should definitely have a baseball field on campus. The rest, I'm not, you know, quite sure of. But what I am sure of is, I was prepared for you to come this year and be talking about Dunning because I really thought we were on that trajectory for Dunning, and I was ready for the $2 million for that because we had been through that quite a bit. And it's part of the Enterprise Zone, we know that it's got the utility. It was going to help not... know that it's got the utility. It, it was going to help not just the athletes, but also other organizations at the school. So I was so on board with the Dunning thing. And so for me, now suddenly, this project going forward, that to me was the disconnect that, that, that switched, honestly. And so that, that's part of it. And the second part of it is, you know, I understand there's very generous people wanting to contribute money, and that's amazing, but no matter what, we're, we're putting in X amount of money and we're deciding whether or not to spend that money or not, whether there are other people contributing. So that's, that's just one thing. But I, I really am curious about the switch from Capo to Dunning because I, I saw that.
So it's a good question. Thank you, Rita. And I should have been clear. We didn't pivot away from Dunning. What we did was re-phase Dunning again. And by that, I mean the phase that we talked about and was approved last time for $2 million and construction was meant to start in the summer of 2023. There's a whole host of reasons why that didn't happen, but we broke that down again into another phase because I felt very strongly, our board felt very strongly that the donor wall and the ticket booth had to happen. The new entrance to Dunning had to happen because that wall recognizes all of the people that generously gave to support the Dunning rip and replace in 2016 and the major project that happened for Water Tower One, Two, Three, and the track. So we actually did that, but we built it. The Athletic Foundation paid for that. We are now phasing again the ticket booth and reorienting the new entryway to Dunning. The Athletic Foundation will pay for that. The only thing that got kicked to next year was the press box. And that specifically got kicked because you're only able to build that project the day after graduation up until the day before the first varsity home football game. So it's a very tight window. And we didn't have the support that we needed to actually get that done. And the donor that we had that was going to name that press box faded as a result. And if I don't have the money, I can't do a project.
So it's the money went, yeah.
Money went with the delay.
I see that. I got it.
Right. But to be clear, we came last year with both. So we came last year with both Dunning and said the baseball was going to come here.
No, I know, but in a year where it's tight, if I had the choice, I would have, I think Dunning would have been the priority.
You just made my point.
No, no. With money tight this year.
No, no, no. I mean, last year, something got delayed, a donor faded because the momentum that we had got derailed.
And unfortunately, you know, government does move slow, and there, there are reasons for it, and I get it. Like I said, you're in good company. That's what happens. You have to come at it several times for it to even move. But again, I, I, going back to now Capo, which again, I, I'm for having a, a baseball field on campus. Is this the year for it? That, I mean, and, and do I want to, do we want to spend 2.5 of taxpayer money on it? That's, that's the question that really still is hitting in my head. And I'm not sure that I necessarily agree that I would want to send it back to the Board of Finance. But, but, but I, I mean, but again, with respect.
I support sending it back and going for the 2.5.
I just want to comment. We hear this expression, we're tight on money and the $500,000 is a lot of money. This is not a $500,000 hit to the operating budget.
I know.
This is a capital item. So the first year hit is maybe 50,000 or whatever the, the exact number is, plus interest. So that's a small...
Good point.
...amount of delta. Now, what's the downside of not spending that money? I mean, we, we've listed them. I mean, the, the impact on donors who are already paying a phenomenal percentage of the project to begin with, the fact that the schools support the field, the fact that it benefits kids, the, the fact that it's an incremental addition to the value of the town and the athletic fields for $50,000? I mean, what we've been through in the operating budget with all these other areas, $50,000, they're items that the Tiger chose not even to mention in his capital budget because they were low. And certainly John did the same thing. Low amounts, you just, you know, it, it makes no sense to me. So, so I think it's worth the risk, especially saying, you know, that there should be some deference to the people that invest time and creativity in building these coalitions and the donor base and running them through. I mean, this is a bureaucratic process. We've been through it.
Hillary has to handle it.
I just, I just want to just bring it home with this. The perception to the public when we're going through the budget this year is that we did some heavy cuts on Health and Human Services. And it affects seniors, it affects a total different spectrum of the community.
Mental health.
Yes. So when the public sees that we're attributing a certain percentage of the budget towards sports versus the food bank or get about, it has a different impression. You're looking at it from your committee's standpoint, and I applaud you for standing up and for speaking for the kids and the programs that you're providing, but there's a different perspective that we're looking at it from. How does it look and, and how does it affect the community? So we have to weigh that in.
All right. My answer to that would be, I go back to our mission statement of all sports and community. The participation of the athletics is an extension of the academics, and people move to this town for the crown jewel, which is the school system. People use that track as part of the community. So we are all sports and community. I would also add, we proactively removed a $2 million ask on the capital side for Dunning and pushed it to 2025 and came forward with this project because that's where we saw our donor support. I appreciate that I'm here representing one level of constituents, and there's many that have to be addressed by your board. I don't think my ask was that but, much when I took $2 million away and asked for two and a half.
I understand. I understand.
Hillary Orme has her hand raised.
You said $50,000, but we were willing to cut like $15,000 for something else. So I'm just, I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's still, it's still money. It's still, it's still...
Well, but it's different money.
I understand.
Because it's, because it's subsidized by, by private donors.
I, I understand.
So we didn't look at the, I, I think the way we look at these budget decisions actually is we're not poor. I mean, we're, we're not shying away from a, from a high increase in our, in our, in our amount expended on town services. We're not poor. We're, we're not slashing and burning like other towns are. That's not what we're doing. What we're doing, if you listen to all the meetings, is we're asking, do you need X dollars to provide Y services? And I think that's the analysis that was going on with Health and Human Services. Do you need the dollars to do the services? Here, you need the dollars to provide the value. You know, it's, it's, it's a whole different analysis. Obviously, everybody has to weigh your priorities.
Yeah, right.
But, but on this project that is so mature and we're, and the town is spending, what, 30 cents on the dollar? It, it, you know, we shouldn't be afraid. I think there's some concern that I sensed on the Board of Finance that, that, you know, I have to be careful how to say this, but we, we can't let donors decide
Yes.
...how much we spend. And I understand that impulse, but okay, ask that question. But does this really feel that way? You know, that, that we're, if we, if we spend two and a half instead of two, that that's because we've been bullied by donors? It doesn't feel that way to me.
Okay, guys, I'm really going to, I need Hillary's question in, and this will be the last one because it's now, we're not going to have an hour discussion on an agenda item that should be three minutes yet. It was, this was a vital conversation that needed to be had, but ultimately now we started to, we need to start drawing our conclusions about the direction to take. Hillary, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Quick, two quick questions. One, is, to, to piggyback on what Tom was saying, is there a way, or is it relevant to, to ask how many donors we're talking about here? Some perspective on that of, you know, is it a wide range of donors or is it like two? And I don't know that that makes a difference. But I think to the extent that that is a concern of the Board of Finance, if we send it back, it might be helpful to have that information. My second question is, again, stealing from Eric, how did you get down from 13 million to six and a half? And is there still more value that can be extracted? And will that come at the, at the expense of donors or the town?
I'll answer the last question first. We have a meeting on Friday to go over the project again because we've sent it back to Turner Construction and Richter and Seegan again for another value engineering exercise. Six and a half million dollars is still a lot of money. It got from 12 and a half, 13 down to six and a half because we asked them to build or to sketch out the, you know, something with, with grandstands behind it, sunken dugouts, you name it, every bell and whistle, knowing that we would value engineer it down from there, but we didn't want to do it the reverse way. So unlike, you know, when I got the first Dunning estimate, I didn't fall out of my chair. When I got this one, I expected a big number, and we knew we were going to go through the value engineering exercise. The answer on the, the donor question is a fair one. I would say, when you build a, any capital campaign, you go through a silent phase. We've been through the silent phase. We have what we call a shadow book of people that have commitments somewhere in the 10 to 15 people range that is well north of a seven-figure number. And then once we know we have the approval, if you will, and, and push forward, we have a lot of support to go wide with that. But as it stands today, there's, there's a north of, well north of a seven-figure number that's represented by, you know, 10 to 20 people, I'd say.
That's really helpful. Thank you so much.
Mike, thanks for your time. I'm sure you'll, if you have any, if anyone has questions, they can reach out to you privately and we can keep that conversation going.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Tiger, do you have anything else?
I have nothing if you don't.
All right. Anybody else, any questions further for Tiger? Once, twice? Tiger?
Thank you very much.
You should go. Having no other items on the agenda, we'll take a motion to end the hearing. I have a motion. Second, Luke. Thank you, everybody. Good night. Motion passes.
Here's still some Irish soda bread. I encourage everyone...